Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll all stand for a moment of silence. Rocco?
Mrs. Catania?
Present.
Mr. Micholi?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Mrs. Pittman?
Here.
I do, uh, I do think we should move to executive session first, though. We could talk about personnel.
Okay.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Micholi, second by Mrs. Catania. Mrs. Catania?
Yes.
Mr. Micholi?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittman?
Yes.
And this is for employment personnel pursuant to ORC 121.22G1. And, where are you going to high school?
Um, wherever you want to go, yeah.
We are back here.
Turn the public session.
Mrs. Catania?
Yes.
Mr. Micholi? Here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Huff?
Here.
Mrs. Pittman?
Here.
Review and approval of May 18th, 2017 regular meeting minutes and the May 26th, 2017 special meeting minutes of the Board of Education.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Micholi, second by Mrs. Pittman. Mrs. Catania?
Yes.
Mr. Micholi?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittman?
Yes.
Okay, we've had some nice honors for some athletes this school year, so I'll kind of quickly read them here for you. Um, in the baseball honors, Inter-Tri County Blue Tier, uh, we were the regular season champions and we were the district runner-up, sectional champs and district runner-ups this year. Eric Ostrowski was first team all-league and first team all-district. Noah Laster was first team ITCL, honorable mention all-state and first team all-district. Sebastian Lay was first team in the league, honorable mention all-state and first team all-district. Joey Williams was first team all-league. John Boland was second team. Scott Mitchell was second team and Zach Lane was honorable mention all-league. We've had some softball honors, too. Sierra Pierce was first team in the league, honorable mention Northeast Ohio. Katie Rego was second team and honorable mention Northeast Ohio. Jenna Seeca was first team in the league. Maddie Hyland, second team. Jordan Stratton, second team. Corey Gross, second team. And Abby Spaulding was honorable mention in the ITCL. Boys' track, we had district qualifier. Ryan Staten was third place in the high jump. Taylor Klinek, seventh place in the long jump. And Jeremy Seeca was sixth place in the 3200 run. Mahoning County meet, Taylor Klinek, uh, third place in the long jump. The 4x100 meter relay team was third place. 4x400 relay team was third place. Uh, Inter-Tri County League meet, Ryan Staten was third place in 110 hurdles and second place in the high jump. And Taylor Klinek was second place in the long jump. In girls' track, uh, Michaelina Terranova was, was eighth place in state track meet in the 300 hurdles down in Columbus. So, uh, she was our representative down in Columbus for track, did a very nice job all season. Uh, regional meet, she was seventh in, uh, the 100 hurdles with a new school record of 15.6 seconds and third in the 300 hurdles with a new school record of 46.6. In the district meet, she was first in the 100 hurdles, 300 hurdles, first also, and fifth in the 4x200 relay. County meet, she was first in the 100 hurdles and first in the 300 hurdles, third in the 4x100 relay, fourth in the long jump. In the Inter-Tri County League meet, she was first in the 100 hurdles, first in the 300 hurdles. She was on the first, first, uh, or the 4x100 relay team which was first and the 4x200 relay team which was first. Emily Williams, uh, in the district meet was fourth in the long jump and fifth in, uh, on the 4x200 relay. County meet, she was third in the long jump, fourth in the disc and the relay team, she was on was third. In the, uh, Inter-Tri County meet, she was first in the long jump. She was on the relay team that was first and on the 200, 4x200 relay team which was first. Ashley Cameron in the district was fifth on the relay team. In the county, the relay team, she was on was third and fifth in the 1600 meter run, sixth in the 3200 meter run. And in the Inter-Tri County meet, she was fifth in the 1600 run. Bailey Estes was, in the district meet, was fifth on her relay team, third in the 4x100 relay. And in the inter-county meet, she was, Inter-Tri County, she was first on the one relay and first on the other 4x200 relay. Chloe Clear in the district was fifth place in her relay. In the county meet, she was third in her relay. In the Inter-Tri County meet, she was third in her relay, fourth in the one run, in the 800 run, and third in the other relay. Courtney Mercer, uh, in the county meet was on a relay team that placed third, was on a relay team that placed sixth. In the Inter-Tri County meet, she was, uh, sixth in the 100 meter hurdles. Gracie Asen at the county meet was on a relay team, the 4x2, uh, was in sixth place. Haley Lingel was in the district meet, uh, was on a relay team that was fifth. In the Tri-County meet, um, was on a relay team that was first. On another relay team, the 4x200 was first and second in the 100 meter dash and fifth in the 200 meter dash. Heather Kirk in the Inter-Tri County meet, uh, was third on a relay and sixth in the 1600 meter run. Taylor Hayes at the county meet was third on a relay team. Inter-Tri County meet was third on a relay team and third on a different 4x400 relay. Tiffany Barlett at the county meet was on a relay team that placed sixth. The Inter-Tri County meet, uh, she was second in the high jump. Addie Robbs at the county meet was third in the 4x800 relay. In the inter-county meet, uh, another relay placed, uh, third. Alex Simpkins, uh, was third at the Inter-Tri County meet on the 4x400 relay.
That's amazing, actually.
Lot of good names there, huh? Lot of good, uh, wars there for the spring sports.
Is that state place or is she a junior?
She is a junior, the girl that went to state track. Yes. And she's a very good basketball player, also.
That's good.
Um, for administrative, super tennis report, I thought, uh, graduation, I thought everything went very well. If anybody has any suggestions. I know sometimes men, some people mention about having a speaker, but then a lot of people don't like having a speaker. You know, we're done within an hour, they get to go out and have dinner with their family and, so, I mean, there's pros and cons probably, but a lot, a lot of people just like it the way the current setup is. I keep it nice and cool for you.
Yes, you do.
I think the only dynamic that could be potentially different would be somebody so engaging that would just have that...
You never know, though, how, what they talk about, though. I feel, I mean, you know what I mean? You can't tell people what to say, how long to, you know, you try, but we've talked about it, you know, with Mr. Baker and myself, and it's kind of been, everybody seems to like it. Nobody's really said.
Well, it's fine. And I've sat through scenarios where it's been a great speaker and, and, so...
Yeah, but I know a lot of people go out to dinner after and stuff, so, so everything I thought went pretty well. Um, B, where we talked about, Billy Patton Award, I don't know if we had a board meeting since the end of school, huh? Didn't? No, that was it. So, kind of going fast. Billy Patton Award was Eric Ostrowski. The Tiffany Obradovich Award was Ashley Totani. Success by Six, uh, is, this is the last week, Success by Six is for the students that are entering kindergarten next year. Uh, Kim, tomorrow we have like a little mini graduation type thing around 15 or so, like, how many kids have we actually had?
Uh, 30 were enrolled, continuing the program, about 28 this last week, a couple, even though we tried to communicate, it's a three-week commitment, so, we're on vacation Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, so it kind of takes a spot for a couple. But we had 30 kids initially signed up, 28 finishing. Um, United Way will be out tomorrow to help and assist in the graduation. They give little Apple Day trackers, some calendars that they have made up, and Hometown Pharmacy is a sponsor now, so they give a couple little things to kids and reminder cards that you can go get free vitamins every month, those kind of things. Um, we had Kelly Williams and Tricia Petur with the teachers again this year. We had two new aides in the classroom, one was Brianna Calacava. The second, we stole the idea from Austintown and a couple of schools have been having their guidance counselor, be the other aide in the classroom, so that way she's beginning to establish relationships with the kids prior to entering the school year, so Christine Ginnis was the other aide this year. Jerry, Ben, Ben Moore's dog, um, the service dog came in, so they had an introduction to him as well. So that was part of the program. We went to the library, we had STEM kits this year, and also junior achievement, um, donated some supplies this year as well to do some financial literacy with them.
And it was really nice watching the, the new, entering kindergarten students get off the bus and go into the library. And that faces were just like...
Really?
That was like a huge filter, so it was very nice.
Kim, what does the, what does the dog do again? What's the primary functions of the...
We have a service dog that's a medical alert dog, um, will indicate when there's a drop in ketones and when insulin is needed, if he's running higher level, he will signal by attacking him.
That's right, so the dog is there for specific...
Yes, yes, yes.
And, uh, dog has licensed insurance and everything?
Done a couple slow training exercises to get him acclimated to the building and admission to riding the bus one day, because he will be riding the bus.
What breed?
He'll be in six.
For me?
The child will be in six that has it all.
Yes, yes.
Uh, what breed was he?
It's a mixed breed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it? I remember, I remember, it looked, it looks like glassy, doesn't it? No?
Um, no.
No?
Looks like he has a little cordy in him. He has like shorter legs, but he's done pretty well. Like, we had him in the hallway when there were four classes lined up and transitioning, and I saw the trainer walking over, so I immediately like started walking and she would just point over to give praise because he was sitting nicely. He has a special mat that he has to lay on, um, under the seat. He goes under the desk to lay down. So, he's interesting.
Good, thank you very much. Uh, handbooks, you always approve, so they're not on there to approve tonight, but they are in your packet, they give you a month to look it over. I think both councils have given you like a cover sheet that goes over the changes. So in case you don't really want to go through the whole thing, you can look at the changes at the meeting.
That's nice.
But we'll have it on your agenda for next month. Okay? But give you a month to kind of look at it a little while. I don't know, three weeks maybe? Because this meeting's a little later. Uh, state budget, as of right now, we're looking at losing a little over $160,000 in the state budget, almost nothing changes correctly, right? That's correct. Uh, this, this week if it doesn't change, but we're looking at, uh, again, uh, it can be lying vetoed, but just the one going to the governor, we're gonna lose over $160,000 a year. I have down there two federal grants, we're down about $80,000 in federal money, so you're, you know, you're looking at quite a bit of, uh, of a loss to us. Everybody's kind of tightening up their belts even tighter than they can go. Um, you know, we've been, uh, not replacing teachers through attrition. I think we've been doing a pretty good job staying with, uh, enrollment, so we're not, you know, talk heavy or anything like that. We are adding, uh, some new classes in STEM, but it's not through hiring any teachers. We're actually gonna be down a teacher at least, so... Uh, we are looking at, again, like we've talked about, we are looking at eventually in the next couple of years opening up kind of our own store. So if you see the, the computer lab where all the windows are, uh, they're kind of transforming that now. Uh, Steve Moore's been in and Ryan Ortuno been working on that, so they'll be able to print, uh, you know, the banners and stuff like that, so, and shirts, you know, making shirts and stuff. So again, it's, we're moving in that direction, so hopefully in the next three years, you know, we can do mugs and stuff and sell stuff and have our own little store.
It'll be nice.
So I think it'd be cool, I think we'll have, we'll have them here one night, we'll be able to show you a little bit once we're up and running.
Mr. Baker, was our funding proportion to other schools of like size in the...
I think we're actually getting a higher percentage hit. Does that make sense?
Well, they're, they're basing the cuts on the enrollment drop issue, and we did have a rather large enrollment drop over the years.
Over the years?
Over the years, I'm, I'm not sure what the...
It was originally three years, then I think they spread it out to five years, I'm not so sure of it.
Yeah. The percentage wise, I think...
The one good thing out of it is, you know, we did take it on our financial forecast. We had the boards like to do that, so, and like I said, we're no, no, absolutely no immediate concern of finances.
Right, but between that and the federal, oh, that's 240,000, and that's before the FART...
Yeah, the CAUV issue. Um, the federal, uh, laws, Kurt was talking about, that has to do with the, um, Pedo One tutors and Pedo One tutors, and we still have enough carryover balance. Most of that money pays for salaries and we're paying for the extra tutors, so eventually we may have to cut back on the tutors, like I told Kim this evening this morning.
And I think last year we bought the one Chromebook, if you remember during the course of the year, we bought a set of Chromebooks from upstairs. And Ryan's working on something that he might be able to explain more. We'll probably be able to go to a one-on-one in the sixth grade with those, uh, those Mobi type computers that the kids use at the high school, he's reconfigured them to go to the elementary school.
But the personnel is not gonna be affected by that right now, at least for the next couple of years, they're still gonna be employed. Since we use a lot of the extra money for supplies and things like that for computers, we just bought a lot of smaller computers, we wanted, the Chromebooks. Yeah. The high school, I don't know, I think I forwarded you, uh, they had a nice article in The Vindicator about the plow, kids did, I think, that everybody just might do, so... And, uh, they don't really announce the winner, though, I think until like the fair. You know, I mean, the plows are O-Doc, they put them up at the tent, that's the thing. Uh, really neat if you get this off, I mean, our kids did a nice drawing of the, you know, the big crisis going on in the valley right now, so, we'll see, but they did a good job, very good job. Uh, open enrollment, uh, right now it looks like we'll have more than we've ever had, we'll probably do over 150 open enrollment students coming in, and actually I think our numbers going out will be less also. Like, we just got a, we just gave a, a second grader that was there two days ago, I think, coming back from West Virginia. He was going to West Virginia, come back, so he gave him a nice blue Jay shirt. He was so happy, I mean, he got, uh, we were actually in a meeting and Mrs. Fitz got up out of the meeting and went and gave him a tour, and they were, seemed real happy, and he, his eyes lit up, giving him a shirt to put on, go, so, uh, no, so I think in them, a couple seniors, you know, that were top heavy, that were actually going out, so, hopefully that was good. Again, we won't really know those numbers till October, but, uh...
And you said the open enrollment deadline is now?
Um, officially it is, I guess it hits on what grade, though, Todd? I mean, we'll still take students.
I got one, I think that's a freshman coming in that wants to, and then another one that'll be at grade or something.
I think, uh, they can download the forms off the web...
I gave them a form.
Oh, okay, just tell them quicker the better, man.
We just texted.
Second and sixth are the two that we only have two teachers at, so if it's gonna push us to hire someone, then we have to...
Um, facilities, I was just gonna give an update on some of the things, but painting the rooms, I think, uh, we talked about that before, the painting, uh, I want to say it was the south walls that were painted last year, that right at elementary school?
They're painting upstairs.
Upstairs.
It's not just, uh, they chose an exit wall.
So they're painting the walls, yeah.
So red, orange, they would pick out red, orange, green, and blue, so...
So they have an accent, kind of like all the classrooms here.
Yeah.
So, pretty cool. So they're doing a lot of stuff at the elementary right now, we're gonna move some rings around in the next, in July, and, uh, we have no major projects this year, like at the stadium or anything like that right now, so, uh, they're getting caught up, uh, with a lot of internal projects, you can't really go out there in the school year. Um, the Hall of Fame, uh, the ceremony is, well, they're gonna do a ceremony at the game on the 25th, and there's a dinner around the 26th at 3 o'clock. Uh, M, we kind of, I'm gonna leave off right now, and then the 4th of July parade, uh, I really think only Mitch is here right now. So Mitch, John's bringing his Army Jeep out.
Oh, he is?
Yep.
Oh, I'm gonna miss it. Will you take a picture, John?
I'm gonna be in the backseat.
Oh, yeah. So Mitch is gonna be in the backseat, she said, um...
I'll come if I can ride, it's can't work.
I was gonna say, that's all right.
You can ride in the Jeep, it's up to you, if you wanna ride in the Jeep.
I'm ready, back to the side.
That'd be real fun, but...
Something's got water, so... Uh, but anyhow, it's, you can be there at 9:30, like, uh, by the, right by the rail tracks there, like before, as always. I think parade starts at 10:00. And I know that, uh, Mr. Gallagher's gonna do a lot of activities at his shop, like behind Dino's. I know they're gonna have some contests for kids and have, he's donating a lot of food for the event, so...
Who's that?
It's behind Dino's, I believe.
Sorry, who is it?
Mr. Gallagher. He's, uh, he's on the, you know, he's in the Morejexer Business Association, so...
Is that afterwards, Greg?
Yeah, after. So, and you know it ends at the, at the stadium, so...
I just can't believe all the years gone by, so...
Yep, it goes fast. Um, it's kind of all I got right now.
Kim, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Mine was mostly just catching up on building projects this summer and Success by Six and...
Okay. Just wanna skip over you, John, I think.
I have four things here. You know, the, the reason why we held the meeting today was because of the corporations moving this far, but I just want to give you a figure real quick. This year we spent a little over $9 million on our general fund budget, yeah, $9,92,000 to be exact. And last year we spent $9,19,000, difference of $72,671, which is really neat because it's not even 1%, it's a 2.8% increase in expenses. So we, we are watching the expenses, we did not deficit spend this year, which is, that's what you have to look for, you know, so you're not, um, using your carryover cash balance. That's good, too, it's going into this potential loss of evidence from the state, so, that's one of the things. Just to tie in with that, just so you're aware, and I think you are, uh, we talked about, I think every department has actually, uh, went down in personnel for this coming year. Like Mr. Snowden, also part-time cleaner, uh, we're looking at maybe, hopefully getting, you know, eliminating him through attrition against someone retired in the bus department, so, uh, we're gonna try our best not to hire, to replace that if we can. Um, we're down a teacher here at the high school, and we're not sure at the elementary school. As of right now, we have two teachers that we believe are leaving. Mr. Hess has already resigned, he's on there for tonight. He actually got a job in Worthington, he's from the Dayton area, and I believe his girlfriend is from, like, the Columbus area, so, uh, we kind of knew that he was looking to move down that way. And as of right now, I believe we have a sixth grade teacher that is accepting a job in another district. So I don't have the letter of resignation yet, but I don't, so I won't have an extra say. And one more thing, um, you know, Ryan has been with handling the food service account, he done a great job this year, Mr. Ortuno. You know, the act, the funds actually gotta end up in the, in the positive, which we're concerned about that. And he's been on the balls first, getting reimbursement done, watching what we're serving, watching the bills, it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing in some districts. They're always transferring money everywhere, but hopefully we can keep it up. I just want to, I've been working hard this year for that.
And, and as John said, I forgot, though, he's, he's probably gonna be down in the personnel, so, you know.
A lot of things we're doing behind the scenes that you guys on there to try to save the general fund. And on, on, uh, page nine of the agenda, I already threw the answer to one of these questions, Tom. Tom, you going to the Campbell Conference on item, uh, R?
Probably.
We need to, to approve an alternate item for the Campbell Conference.
Maybe, if someone wants to go, I could probably...
When is it this year?
Uh, I think it's that first week of November.
It's the election the first week of November.
I'll be an alternate.
Well, I can tell you, it's historically always been during Veterans Day.
So it's usually after.
I'll be an alternate, nobody else wants to be an alternate.
Again, it doesn't hold you to anything, it just doesn't hold you to... We'll put on Mr. Micholi's name in there, and, okay. Tom Huff? It's Micholi, has the, has the alternate.
Riding down motorcycle. Together.
On page 16 of the agenda, we have the, and item N about approving the July board meeting. I'm not, you can still hold there if I'm not gonna be here, but fuck you, Kirk, whatever you want to do. It's up to the board, if you don't care if John's here, you can leave it, if it fits. I don't know if anybody has anything going, uh, what night is it actually originally? Well, Thursday. No, but what's the date?
The 20th.
Well, here is it.
July 20th.
I mean, I don't, I don't really care, it's just, so John, if John will be here any night.
Yeah, we do work in Colorado.
There shouldn't be much on the agenda.
I think last year we didn't have one, too, right? I have a feeling, though, what, oh, we might need to have one.
So, let's kind of see how things play out here, maybe we'll have it earlier.
You would have to, I'm gonna be at Denver the 21st on, so...
From July 21st? But I'm thinking we might need to have it, move it up instead of back.
That's what I mean, if we move it up, that would be okay.
Well, kind of. Were you going that Thursday before?
I could do the 13th.
13th?
Okay, so we'll have an item N here.
You're good, it's...
That's fine.
Uh, I didn't hear anybody say, I'm talking.
But you might need it in two, I mean, by two weeks, you've got the rest of your ducks in a row, hopefully.
I'm good with it, Tom. Yes, Kim, you're good.
Okay. At 7:30 PM here. Okay, we're just gonna add that resolution to item N, recommend to the board, meaning you move to July 13, 6:30. Rated? Rated pretty good, I'm sure.
John, are those changes moving into the, um, website? Because I had someone call that said they didn't, they were here last week for the board meeting, but then they didn't come tonight anyhow, but are they making it to the website this summer?
No, I don't know. I'll make sure that's...
Definitely, thanks.
I'm pretty sure the June was, so...
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I just had someone say that they came last week, so...
I got one more thing, don't know if I, uh...
What did Mr. Baker say?
Mr. Hess was in second grade, uh, but he was gonna have to go first, I think. Right now, uh, we have three kindergarten teachers, and right now we're, we're just at the point where we don't need three, so, we really don't have to replace Mr. Hess at the right now, but a lot of times we get kids enrolling for kindergarten, and then we'll have to, because we're close. I think we're 40 now of kids, so... And then the last thing, on page 13, we just, for now, we just have to remove a few of those first three high school coaches onto the high school.
I'll chime in, I think the person, we would have to replace the first two for sure in the upper grade though.
The first three ended at high school, and then the middle school, the first one. So we get some clarification on how that's gonna be, so... So we will have to vote on those four, and that's all that happened. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, on page, page, uh, 13 also, item C and D are, Kirk's pulling, he's off. Item C and D, and then those four coaches, for now. Kirk, put it in there. Kirk, get a picture in there.
You should see D and E, right?
In E though, not, it's not the first, what, in E, John? One, two, three? First three. Yeah. We'll leave the soccer ones on, all right?
Yeah. I have a few notes of interest regarding House Bill one oh two. This bill would institute a new school funding plan that would create a statewide property tax. It would repeal district property and income taxes, require ESCs to transport students on a county-wide basis and allow districts to enter into a memorandum of understanding for one district to manage another. So there is something on this House Bill one oh two floating around. Good information pertaining to that. We have the state superintendent. He is calling for limiting some state and local testing. And what the superintendent is doing is proposing to reduce the number of student assessments during the June twelfth presentation to the State Board of Education. And he mentioned some of those that he would like to see eliminated. So is that anything that you're familiar with, Mr. Baker? Would you like to eliminate some of that testing?
Yeah, I mean, they've talked about cutback.
Think it'll happen?
I hope so.
So House Bill two twenty. This would subject the charter industry to the same audit rules as school districts. This would allow the state auditor to audit the expenditures of for-profit and non-profit charter school management companies. And it would require the state auditor to follow a public dollar wherever it goes. So currently, management companies can spend the money, public money with no transparency and accountability is the argument. It's being voiced in House Bill two twenty. And as I mentioned previously, the lawsuit is still in effect regarding to the sixty million dollars that school districts are suing to get repaid to their districts related to electronics, online schools. That's it for me.
I thought there was a bigger number of that, of that ECO lawsuit. Yeah, I thought it was three hundred something. But they were looking for ECO, ECO to pay back to the state.
Yeah. I thought it was three hundred and two, but I don't know. What about House Bill one oh one or something about counting?
Yeah, there you go, Tom.
You can have that, I got one. All right, thanks. Just again, I'm going to kind of turn here. So real quick, on page fourteen. G is the MOU that we kind of talked about. That makes sense. Well, we just finally got it signed and everything, so that's why it's probably added later. So I'm sorry to trouble you.
That's okay.
You started roundtable, I think, though.
Roundtable. Mitch, we haven't heard from you for hours.
That's true. You know, when we have something of excellence that was noted, we need to note it as a board. And that would be the state placer of, is it Michaelina Terranova? So for the record, that's something that should be noted. It doesn't happen all that often. And her other accomplishments were very impressive as well.
I think we could ask her about it.
She's just a great kid.
Have good students.
Really?
She's lovely. And she was prom queen.
Oh, yeah.
Very, uh.
Good for her, right? Beautiful girl.
She was, very, very nice kid.
Just wanted, that's it. Take a note, Sean? Put those notes in, Sean, take it over there. I was curious, the Billy Patton Award is very important prestige. What elevated, what did this individual do?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't really get involved in that. There's a whole criteria. They get points for sports they play, points for extracurriculars that they're in. They get points based on if they were all league, all Northeast Ohio. There's a whole bunch of ways they can get points. I don't know all the exact.
So it's a point system, then?
Yes. And again, it's, it's actually, you get points, I believe, for not even being, for being in that supplementals that aren't even athletic, I think.
It's actually a good point.
Yeah, like if you're in drama and stuff, you're going to get points. It's a tall point system, so it takes out any, it's all black and white, really.
And the last thing for me is I saw that the old punt pass and kick back.
Yeah. I don't know if you know Ron at, he's part, he's the Brown Backers out at Dutchville. So we've been, I've been talking to him because I play bocce down out there. They're going to use the field, which I thought was great, you know, getting kids in here and stuff. So they're going to use our field for punt passing kick.
Isn't, isn't there somebody in this room that won that way back when?
Long time, oh, yeah.
There we go.
Long time.
Did you win?
He was unfair, he was telling me the size of everybody.
Yeah, that's cool.
My son's a great, he's living room.
Yeah.
Four times.
Except Al.
That's it, Clint.
I'm good.
Tom?
Nothing.
Kim? I have one thing. It's just kind of a cool idea. I don't know if you guys would embrace it or not. But one thing we started doing at work, which I think you could draw a pretty cool parallel with, with the schools, because we've been talking about ways to kind of like bridge the community and the school. We have what's called a patient advisory council. It's kind of along the premise of a PTA, but it would be probably more at the, probably more at the high school level because we have a PTA at the elementary level. But we do ours quarterly, probably even do it twice a year. But what you do is you have, you know, parents come in or whatever, kind of bring their perspective or their ideas. And then I brought these, if you want to see what we do with that. We usually highlight some positive comments, things we're doing right. And we try not to put a negative spin on it. But say someone has an insurance issue or someone maybe on this side of the table would have an issue, I don't know, with communication or whatever. You write up a really nice blurb that kind of says, hey, if this ever affects you, this is what you should do, or this might help you out in this situation. I don't know if you guys want to do anything with it or not, but.
I'd like to look at it.
We had a J-PA. When I first started here, there was a junior high PTA. It was called J-PA for years. And I don't know what happened. I'm trying to think whether it even dissolved.
Yeah, oh, I would say.
I have a meeting with principals, so I'll make coffee soon after that. So what is it again?
Well, you know, I wanted those surveys before, but the surveys were kind of abysmal. They just didn't work out, you know? And what it is, it's like an interactive meeting. So like how we would do it in healthcare and you can draw the parallel, is it's just a quiet little meeting, you know? People are picked, some are medical assistants, some are physicians, some are patients, some are administrators. And they get together and they kind of talk about, look, this is what it's like on our side of the aisle. This is stuff we struggle with. And then we kind of explain to them, well, this is why that happens. Maybe you don't understand that, you know, we have to follow this guideline. Like I know, being on the board, I learned so many things that I was oblivious to because I don't work in education. So sometimes just making that dialogue and then putting out a nice little, you know, you could e-blast it or whatever, but like we do, like a little newsletter. And then that goes to all of our patients, either on the portal or there are some people that it get mailed to. We try to do more and more electronically because it saves on the mailings. And honestly, you could even have the kids, we could help put the, you know.
Yeah, the high school.
Yeah, the newsletter together. But I just think it's a nice way to draw people together and help people see the other side of the aisle.
Tom's been negative to that.
I don't see a negative to this, like the, the surveys, so.
I'm not meeting with Kim and David, boy, it's all my coffee.
You know, I won't let the survey die. I had to reinvent it.
You talk about the surveys, they didn't go real well when I put them out. But Ryan got way more for the cafeteria.
They did. Well, maybe he's wearing that.
I want the rest of me on that thing right now. He had, he had tons of great suggestions and stuff.